Okay, good morning, everyone. Just try to round everybody up so we could get started. I'd like to call this public hearing to order. On the agenda are two bills, Bill 424 and -32, and Bill number 425-32. It's a couple minutes after nine o'clock. And in accordance with the open government law, notices of this hearing were sent to all main media outlets, all senators and stakeholders, five days in advance on November 18, 2014. And a second notice was sent on November 20, 2014. We have the sign-up sheet over there, so if you're interested in testifying on any of these two bills, please sign in. And I'd like to recognize Senator Tony Ada for being here, Senator and Dr. Elina Yamashita for being here, and Senator Michael Limtiaako. The first bill on the agenda is Bill number 424-32, and it's introduced by myself. And it's an act to amend nine of the Guam Administrative Rules, Division 1, Chapter 3, Section 3226H2, to clarify that concrete and solid metal walls are acceptable as perimeter fencing for commercial quarantine facility. I have some individuals who signed up to testify, but before I call them up, I just want to establish some ground rules here, so we could try to address this not only in a very diplomatic way, but in an expedient way, so that we can continue to build on a series of status hearings that we had over the last several months, to which Senator Yamashita attended every single one of those hearings. Originally, you know, I decided that we need to publicly talk about why it's taken upwards of six, eight, or even 10 years to get this one animal quarantine facility inspected. And the position that the government has taken is that they're in serious default, because the law says you have to have a cyclone fence, but they have a concrete barrier. And so after having a series of status hearings, the Department of Agriculture, because they made a public commitment, went and inspected the proposed animal quarantine facility. And unfortunately, they inspected that facility using a different standard than how they inspected the other two facilities. And so I'm not sure if the Agriculture Department's gone back and used that same standard for the other animal quarantine facility, both of them, and then the other one that was recently established. But this bill, ladies and gentlemen, really, I think, is designed to update the code, to force a serious discussion on whether or not concrete barrier is just as effective, if not even more effective, than having a cyclone fence for a perimeter barrier. And it's designed in a way, as I wrote the bill, to not close any particular animal quarantine facility and give some time for others to comply, right? And so I'd like to start the hearing by inviting the Director of Agriculture up. And I see that also signed in to provide some testimony is Dr. Oshiro, Dr. Joseph, and Benjamin Schiff. So there's four chairs we could take for view, and I think this is the only panel that's going to testify in this bill. Again, before we testify, Director, I recognize you first. I'm just asking that we stick to the merits or demerits of the proposed legislation, and then we take it from there. Okay? Director.
Good morning. Buenos dias, Senor Fadé. Mr. Chairman, and members of the Committee on Rules, Foreign and Micrionization Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, and Election Reform, Guajosí, Mariquita, Taitagu, Director de Department de Agricultura, I come before your committee to provide comment on Bill number 48-4-32, an act to amend nine guard division, Chapter 3, Section 33, 3226, to clarify that concrete and solid metal walls are acceptable as perimeter fences for commercial quarantine facility. I would like to express my objection to this proposed bill. Please allow me to explain the basis for my conviction. Formosa is the fact that this bill proposed to weaken laws that have served Guam very well for many years. We have suffered no outbreak of rabies, nor have any quarantine animals escaped from our quarantine facilities. What is the dire problem that justified weakening the laws that preserve a rabies-free status? We have three independent quarantine facility ensuring competition. Clearly, it's not excessively burdensome to meet those requirements, as Dr. Malakuti just accomplished that three months ago. He made no demand that Guam changed. He simply followed the law. Our current quarantine fencing requirements are consistent with the standards of Hawaii, Australia, New Zealand, and the United States Department of Defense. Chain link fence stop with wire offer advantages that are not duplicated with solid wall. One cannot see through the wall, so it is impossible to know what's going on there. Has any animal escaped its primary enclosure? Is it waiting for someone to open a door so that it can bolt free? Is unauthorized person inside trying to free an animal from its primary enclosure? If walls work as well as perimeter fences, then pets will not escape from veterinarian hospital. I humbly ask this body on behalf of the Department of Agriculture not to pass this legislation. To compromise for one would mean to compromise for everyone else in this delicate island of ours. Thank you, Sejuus Maase.
And you have provided a copy of that for the committee, and we've made copies. Director, I find it interesting, and we can have a discussion after the others have testified, that you think this proposed legislation weakens the quarantine facility laws?
Correct.
Okay. So you think that a concrete barrier is less of a barrier than a cyclone fence?
Like, the fact that, you know, the reason that I just stated, that when it's a concrete solid wall, you can't see anything through the concrete wall, you know, to see what's going on. And the minute you open the door, if one of the dogs loose inside there, it just runs out, and there's no barrier to protect them, you know, the animals. So that's why the fencing is required, because of the fact that if it runs out to the first, you know, enclosure, then it will be protected by the outside enclosure, which is the perimeter.
But I'm taking that into consideration, and this is exactly what it is. It's the perimeter fence. But when you go inside the animal quarantine facility, any animal quarantine facility, each animal will be contained in their individual fences. And so if you're going to take the position that we're weakening the quarantine requirements, okay, I'm interested. I'm really, I want to get into your mind, and I really want to understand the position to which you're taking this morning, that having a concrete barrier is less safe to keep the animals in than having a cyclone fence.
It's not, like I say, it's what's going on. You cannot see through when it's a solid wall. You cannot see through, you know, what's going on in there. But if it's a fencing, you know, a cyclone fencing, you can see through what's going on. And that's the only reason why we're opposed to this, or the fact that solid wall, you cannot see through.
But I've done my own research, and there are other jurisdictions that recognize concrete fencing as a barrier, as a perimeter fence.
Not enough Australia, or New Zealand, and the United States of Defense, Hawaii, they use cyclone fencing, so to, like I say, just to protect, you know, the escaping of the animals.
Yeah. By the way, does the department have a territorial vet on contract?
Yes. We, the front office is the one that's contracting the territorial vet.
Because I wrote you several letters, and you never responded.
Yes. And then, you know, they will assign him to us. They're assigning him to us. It's the governor's office that is, has the contract with the territorial vet, and they will assign us to us when needed. So that's how we're doing it right now.
Because I heard after September that Dr. Poole, and he just walked in, that he retired as a territorial vet.
Correct.
Then I asked you numerous times if this island is equipped with a territorial vet on contract. You never responded.
So I put it in the hands of the governor, you know, the front office, to take care of it, and they're taking care of it, you know? So I just already signed the contract. We're having, you know, we're making the contract between the governor's office and my department. I have no, I'm not making the contract with, you know, I'm not drafting the contract with Dr. Poole. It's the front office that's doing it for us.
Okay.
And he's assigning, he's assigning him to us, to do some work for us. So that's where we're at, at this moment.
Okay. And it's relative to this whole quarantine thing, because he participated in this process.
Yes.
So I'll just go down the line. Dr. Oshiro, they're deferring to you.
I think you asked.
No, they defer to you, so go ahead. I recognize you at this time.
Okay. Please excuse me if I'm not speaking into the mic properly. Please let me know if I can do better. Good morning, senators, and thank you for this opportunity to let me speak to this issue. First, to clear the record, Dr. Joseph has, in a previous hearing, stated that I, Dr. Vanessa Oshiro, was the attending veterinarian for Harper Valley Kennels in a court case judged in the plaintiff's favor. This is a patently false statement. As predicted, he publicly lied in an attempt to undermine my character so as to distract from his own. Harper Valley Kennels was found blameless in the case to which he referred. I challenge Dr. Joseph to produce evidence to the contrary, and I will defend my name in court if necessary. I will submit for the legislature the judgment for Harper Valley Kennels as an appendix to this testimony. Secondly, I would like to remind the legislators of the letter to the World Health Organization by Dr. Joseph, presented at one of the numerous pre-election hearings, that strained the limits of acceptable politics. And that was at the meeting where he actually made the statement against me. In that letter, Dr. Joseph vigorously contends that Guam's rabies-free status should be removed by that organization. This should be a clear signal of the danger he presents in the protection of Guam's borders and is further evidence of his character. I also will submit that letter for the legislators to review. Given Dr. Joseph's history, as testified by two independent veterinarians, Dr. Paul Pumas and myself, regarding his proposal to the World Health Organization to rescind Guam's rabies-free status, and his lack of respect for the potential effects of a novel rabies outbreak on Guam thereby implied, I have to question Mr. Respecho's judgment in pursuing this current action. Guam can be quarantined should a new rabies outbreak occur, and the effects of such a scenario would be extreme. In the name of serving the dubious interests of one man, the community at large is being made more vulnerable by the repeated harassment of Department of Agriculture government officials merely living up to their mission in safeguarding our island. Further, given the current Ebola crisis, it seems even more irresponsible of this legislature to devote so much of their time, paid for with the people's resources, to Dr. Joseph's cause. Failure of clear quarantine procedures for this disease has resulted in heightened fear amongst Americans of an epidemic and not without merit. More is known about the threat of rabies disease progression and prevention of its spread, and yet this government would lessen quarantine safety measures to repeatedly accommodate the fancy of one dangerous individual. Dangerous. Finally, please be aware that my concerns voiced here are about preserving integrity in the legislative process, and are not personal in nature, speaking to a dangerous precedent openly unfolding, perhaps, and hopefully, even without the senators leading this effort, being aware of what their dogged support of such a questionable cause could look like to voters. For as Pope Francis so astutely has observed, corruption is like bad breath. Often, the one who has it doesn't realize it, and someone else must notice and tell them. Consider me the messenger. On that note, I would also add that all the senators would do well to remember that the people's vote has afforded you your positions in government, and you have a duty to them to represent their interests fairly. Only you know within yourselves what your true motives are, and whether you actually live up to the language you co-opt. But we, the people, know what they should be, and your actions will be the true test of your faithfulness to your constituents. Those of you who have been re-elected may congratulate yourselves now, but do not forget that the voters of Guam have a long memory, for better and worse. Ultimately, God will be the judge, as he inspires them to see through any self-serving politics, to uncover who our real representatives are for the long run. He's already at work here. Thank you.
And now, could you provide testimony on the bill?
I'm providing that in these two forms here, right now.
Do you have a position on the bill, other than?
Yes, my position is, it's a very dangerous proposal, given that you are dealing with a man who has clearly demonstrated his lack of respect for the problem.
But Dr. Oshiro, I want to ask your professional opinion, setting your personal position on this bill.
Sir, I did say this is not personal.
I understand, but I'm saying, do you think that putting a concrete barrier to recognize it, or cyclone fence or concrete barrier, does that weaken the quarantine rules and regulations?
It does weaken them, because a cyclone fence is necessary as a secondary barrier. That was what was testified priorly.
I don't know. Okay, thank you for your participation. Would you like to stay back in case some senators have some questions? I may have some questions for you myself.
I think I'm finished. Thank you. I'll be leaving.
You're not making yourself available for any questions?
Well, I don't think I have any questions.
No? If I have any questions, if you're not making yourself available for any questions?
No, I think I've stated my piece here, and I don't think I have more to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Benjamin.
Thank you, all the senators, for taking time out of your day to come for this hearing. We appreciate it. I just wanted to address a couple issues before I just read a couple little things that I wrote. We've been here multiple times, and I heard the director herself, as well as Dr. Poole, mention that if we did have a perimeter fence around our facility, that they wouldn't have a problem with our facility. And then today, they go and they say, having a concrete wall prevents them from seeing inside the facility. Well, if we put a fence around our facility, you still will not be able to see through our concrete walls. So I want to show you that the reason why we've been here multiple and multiple times is because, unfortunately, the people doing the inspection choose the way they want to read the law. So I hope when you guys are writing the law, you guys just double-check each word very specifically, so that it's not under each person's individual thought of what that law was supposed to be. So exactly, maybe even consequences, or something that says, because I believe in the law, it does say you have six months to update the current facilities, or maybe update our facility, or any facility that matters. However, when the military opened their quarantine facility back in 2001, the same law was passing. Harper Valley Quarantine had one year to update their facility, and they still haven't. And even though this law only is pertaining to the perimeter fence, we've been arguing about other people's perimeter fences for some time now. And it's funny how Director Taitagu is going to bring up Dr. Malakuti's facility now, saying that there was no problem with him getting his facility open. He didn't have to, we didn't have to change the law or anything. But his facility is in tin, so you can't see inside his facility either. I went to his facility. There is a perimeter fence around it, but you can't see inside the facility. Is that correct, ma'am?
Yeah, there is a perimeter fence.
Can you see inside the facility? Or is there still the tin wall?
Well, the law that we are, you know, we're dealing with this morning, it says here, the premise of a CQF shall be surrounded by perimeter fence not less than eight feet in height and top with barred wire tilted inward. Fencing wire should be of a mess of size two inch by two inch or less, and of no less than nine gates. So that's the only thing we're following, you know, we're going to the law.
Okay. I urge once again, this is why I ended up bringing in pictures of the other facility, and videos of the other facility. I really, I understand everyone's really busy, and you guys take time out of your time to come here. But these other facility is indoor as well. It is attached to his animal hospital as well. So these people are interpreting the law to see how they fit for their friends. So I just urge the senators to really think about how they word these laws. Mostly, about the bill, I just want to see some penalties for people not following, including myself. It should be, the penalty should be for Director, the Director of the Department of Agriculture doing this inspection, regardless who it is, and the owner of the facility. So if I opened a facility, and I had six months not to, or six months to update it, and I didn't update it, there should be some type of penalty for me not following the law. That's the main thing I want to get a point across to you guys today. Because or else we'll be back here in another six months, wasting another taxpayer money of ours, so.
Well, according to the bill, it doesn't say, but the penalty for non-compliance should be a revocation of the license.
Well, I believe that's a, I believe they're going to try to find a way around that.
Okay.
Just as they've been trying to find a way around their fence, once again, I took videos of the current fences. There's still a debate about the measurements, and if there's a double perimeter fence around the current one as well. And then plus, the law already states that there's not allowed to be overgrown, brush, brushes, and shrubs, and boonies all over these fences. However, there are, only half the facility's clean. It really comes down to making sure when we change the law this time, that we are preventing from doing this all over again.
Okay. Dr. Joseph?
Thank you, Senator Respecho, for holding this hearing, Senator Yamashita, for listening to all this through all the other meetings. And I really appreciate the participation by Senator Limtiaako and Senator Ada. We really do appreciate your presence here. Because what we are talking about, I believe, is public health in Guam. Okay? I have a little prepared statement, and I'm going to also submit this for written testimony. I would like to quickly go over a couple things that have been said already. Weaken the government laws, existing laws, I think you've already touched on that. Rabies status. Dr. Oshiro referred to my letter to WHO about Guam's rabies status. And yes, I proudly wrote that letter. And it is not illegal, it is not improper for a professional to voice a concern of something he sees happening in an effort to try and correct that situation. Now, in the status hearings for the quarantine that Senator Respecho has been holding, I submitted an inch-and-a-half loose leaf binder that has also been submitted to the military and the Senate Armed Forces Committee in the U.S. And in there, it has a section on rabies law and the rabies status here in Guam. Guam law, I am talking about Guam law, states that you must have strict adherence and maintenance, adherence and maintenance, to quarantine procedures, et cetera. In the nine to 10 years that Dr. Poole has been the territorial veterinarian, there has not been one legal inspection of a quarantine facility, and Guam law states it has to be done weekly. I can simply prove that no quarantine inspection has been done, because no quarantine inspection form has ever been written until this status hearing started to produce it. And now we have different forms for different quarantine facilities, as Senator Respecho has been, has indicated. Okay? So if we do not follow our own law that states how Guam determines some other country is rabies-free, how can we declare ourselves rabies-free? And maintaining a rabies-free status is important for Guam. Speaking up about its inadequacies is a proper thing that professionals and citizens of Guam do. Okay? To top that off, I have submitted along with that, in the status hearings, the issue about what the OIE says about quarantine procedures and vaccinating for rabies in rabies-free territories. Rabies-free territories that are authorized and confirmed by OIE are not allowed to vaccinate for rabies. And I have submitted those laws in that handout. And they are available, I guess Senator Respecho could make them available to you, or I can. So what we are talking about is Guam's rabies-free status here. You have to maintain stringent quarantine procedures to be rabies-free. My goal is not to make Guam lose its rabies-free status. My goal is to make sure that Guam has properly, legally acquired that status, maintains that status, and the people of Guam are proud of that status that they have attained. My son recruited to Dr. Malakuti's office. They have metal. They have an entrance from the inside, I'm told. The Department of Agriculture said we were going to have public inspections, and they have refused to do so. The Department of Agriculture has stated they will produce all the documents. They have not produced one. They say that the rabies laws or the quarantine laws in these other places do not allow concrete walls. They have not provided a single document stating so. Okay? If you cannot see through concrete walls, that is true, you can't. Okay? If you want, I can pull up on my phone every room and everything in my quarantine. It is on the computers in my office, it is on the computer in my bedroom, and it is on my phone. Every single kennel, and hallways, and the outside area is monitored by a camera. If you have a fence, unless you are there, you don't see the animal escape. And you cannot tell me that the people that are monitoring a quarantine are monitoring the fences, or that they have the security on the outside of these fences, which Director Taitagu previously declared is a really critical issue. Everything in my facility is alarmed. Everything is videoed. Okay? You don't have to see through a fence. You have to be there. And a camera is there, but your own personal eyes, somebody sitting at a front desk, is not. She says that there have never been escapes. I've already provided letters in the status hearings where there have been escapes. We have provided proof that the inspection done by Dr. Poole and approved by Director Taitagu are falsifications. We have proven in photo and documents that there is no equivalent perimeter fence around Harper's facility. And you've already described the double-door thing. If you open a door, I mean, you got to open the door to the cage, then you got to open up the double doors to the facility, and my facility even has a third door. Dr. Oshiro alluded to the Ebola crisis. That's right. It has taught us what quarantine is. And what we have here on Guam is not maintenance and adherence to quarantine laws. She mentioned, Director Taitagu mentioned about Dr. Poole and the governor designating him, or whatever is happening regarding a territorial veterinarian. Our territorial veterinarian retired. Okay? I believe he did so because he was promised a job in the military. And I will be blunt, yes, the inch-and-a-half folder I submitted to the military probably railroaded that off the tracks. Okay? Now he doesn't have a job. I have heard through sources that he has applied to rehire, be rehired at a lower salary, under certain conditions, including a condition in which he appoints his successor. I am not saying that this is fact, this is what I've heard, but regardless, if the governor is going to appoint a territorial veterinarian, I'm sorry, I believe that there is a hiring process. And I was part of that hiring process that Dr. Poole beat me out on. Okay? I don't hold any grudges against that, because quite frankly, I've had a lot more money and a lot more success, and I'm having a lot more fun than being the territorial vet. But again, the Ebola crisis has taught us things. My written testimony, I'm going to submit this, this is my written and oral testimony at today's public hearing regarding the clarification and modification of the existing Guam quarantine laws. I believe we are here today not because we need to change the law, but because we need to clarify the law. We need to clarify the law, and I'm going to be blunt on my beliefs, because the Kelvo administration has seen fit to implement the law for the benefit of its friends and its own personal vendetta against me. This is despite what the law actually states. You heard Director Taitagu say that the fence has to be at least. At least does not mean you exclude concrete and metal. Okay? I really want everyone to understand that this is the not, this is not the first time we have had to go through this. This is a recurring theme. This is a recurring theme. This is a recurring action, and this has cost taxpayers of Guam millions and millions of dollars, and I want to give you several examples. First, we had a law passed to clarify the open government law. The clarification was simple. It bluntly stated that people are allowed to record at all public meetings. The open government law did allow for the recording of all public meetings. However, this administration threatened to keep me in court for five years fighting that interpretation of the open government law. I commend our intelligent senators who passed a clarification of the law that stated and negated that such a frivolous five-year lawsuit didn't need happen, had to happen and cost our taxpayers money. I want people to remember Governor Eddie Kelvo's speech, where he stated that he welcomes in open arms the opening of the curtains and transparency in his administration. If you do not remember this, I am providing you with the YouTube site in my written statement. It's here in my written statement. Uh, it is located at the two-minute mark of the video. I remind you of this because not only did we have to fight for clarification of the open government law, as we mentioned above, but once the law was passed, this administration then enacted the law in such a manner that our cameras and microphones had to be placed underneath air vents, placed in other odd places, so that you could neither hear nor see what was transpiring clearly on the recordings. It was not until the news media arrived and insisted on proper placement of recording devices that those serving at Governor Kelvo's pleasure, the Guam Board of Allied Health, decided that what they were doing was, um, shall we say, inappropriate? If you missed the point of this example, I will be blunt. We had to pass a law, to clarify a law, only to have Governor Kelvo prevent the law from going into effect for as long as him and his, those who he appointed could possibly do so. Second example, we had to pass Public Law 30-195, and that law identified specific problems with Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. Please remember that all the members of Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners are appointed by Governor Kelvo and serve at his pleasure. This is what the law says. Public Law 30-195 stated these problems and its board members. The law was passed unanimously by the senators, including the yea vote from Senator Tenorio. What has happened since is that Governor Kelvo refused to obey the law. He simply continues to ignore it. The board has not changed, the term limits have not been honored. Okay? His appointees, which serve as, as, which serve at his pleasure, have lost 24 out of 24 lawsuits against me. This has cost the people of Guam literally millions, and I repeat, millions of taxpayer dollars. 24 law cases, you better believe it's millions.
Dr. Joseph?
Yes.
I'll accept that as your testimony and, uh, for the record, but can we just, uh, talk about the bill?
Uh, this does relate directly to the bill. And I'm getting there.
Yeah, and I, I see your point. Your point is that this is being done to clarify the law. Uh, and I, but I want to generate some discussion for the record, uh, with respect to whether or not this legislation weakens the quarantine law because it would also recognize concrete wall as a barrier.
Um, okay. All right. This goes on, I'll let you guys read this.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay? Um, I have another example in here, uh, and again, I go on to also emphasize that we clarified another law, and that it was not enacted, it was enacted poorly, it was sub, subverted in one manner or another. Okay? Um, regarding this law, okay? We have proven that, uh, the previous quarantines we talked about did not meet the law. We proved this in your sen, your hearings. Okay? Um, as a result of what we've proven in your hearings, I believe that if you follow the law, Guam must lose its rabies status. Okay? And if we're trying to enhance or degrade these laws, if you aren't honoring quarantine laws, and we have not had a quarantine inspection of any public facility or the military facilities, they were unable to come up with one inspection of their facility either on paper, and Guam law says you have to inspect the quarantine facilities of the military. Okay? Guam must lose its rabies-free status. Guam must close the present quarantine stations. Uh, Dr. Mel Kuti's is probably accepted at this point. And I think we need to prosecute those involved. All right? Um, if you get nothing else out of everything I've written here, uh, please realize that the people who are supposed to be protecting our island from rabies and other diseases have been so incompetent, and I think corrupt, that they cannot notice when a dog breaks its leg in quarantine, is there for three months, three-legged lame. Okay? If they can't recognize a dog that has a broken leg for three months and is in quarantine, how can they recognize rabies? This is a failure of education of the staff, which is also part of the quarantine laws. Okay? Um, I say to the senators, and mostly I say to the Guamanian people, that we still need to pass the laws that are in front of us today. We need to stop the waste of our taxpayer money, uh, by this present administration and its personal persecution of me and my family. I want you to understand how far they've gone. We just won a slap lawsuit for this government filing a frivolous lawsuit against me and my family that was designed to cause me economic and emotional harm. All for speaking up, and all for standing up, and all specifically related all to this quarantine, because that's where it all started, back in 2001. Okay? Uh, the waste will not stop until this law is clarified, so please, let's pass this law. Even then, we all need to understand that we must have the problem of getting the Kelvo-Tenorio administration to follow and enact the law. Director Titigui and the suddenly retired Gov-Guam Territorial Veterinarian, Dr. Poole, have consistently stated how important fencing is for a quarantine facility. It is their main sticking point. They have stuck to this, and they have drilled it. It is the sole item they push and push and push. So today, we are here again to clarify this and try to get them to enact the laws that they say are so very, very important. For this reason, I am also suggesting beyond just the passage of this law, that you include penalties for failure to follow these laws. Not just penalties that can be avoided or are minimal, but I'm talking about penalties that will provide the laws with the needed teeth, so that those who serve at the governor's pleasure understand that the law comes above the personal pettiness that has been demonstrated throughout this administration and this procedures and these actions against me and my business. Penalties for putting Guam in a position where it should and could lose its rabies status, instead of trying to take the license away from somebody who speaks up about it. Penalties for failure to follow basic public health procedures, which is the purview of the government. Penalties because we are a nation of law and not a nation of simply rich and powerful people who feel they are above the law. I would suggest that if the Director of Agriculture fails to legally and fairly inspect all the open and proposed quarantine facilities, that the inspector and he or she, the director, be fined a minimum of $10,000 per facility, and that he or she be personally responsible for all the legal fees of those who argue and fight against it, from all parties, from such action and inaction on the director and I guess the inspector's part, which would be Dr. Poole. I suggest $10,000 because those who are in these positions are fairly wealthy, okay? Have fair amount of money. They have had episodes where they have lost $10,000 and they've lived with it. Okay? A $20,000 fine would hurt them. A $10,000 fine won't necessarily hurt them, but will ta, make them take notice. Okay? Um, they are dealing with public health issues. The fine should be substantial so that they don't want to do this again. The fine and the sanctions for the slap lawsuit by law are supposed to be strong enough and big enough that they do not do slap lawsuits and frivolous lawsuits again. It seems obvious that the sanctions are not enough. I would suggest that if a quarantine facility fails to adhere to the requirements of the fencing law, that it be fined $500 per day that the facility remains open and in violation of the law. If it's in violation, close it down, it doesn't have to get fined. But until it gets, uh, in compliance, it should be. I would suggest that the Director of Agriculture be personally fined $10,000 for failure to close any facility not meeting the fencing requirement. We've already proven that Harper's facility doesn't. We've shown that the law says two-by-two fencing. The quarantine law says six or seven times in the law that the fencing has to be two-by-two. The quarantine law says that this is for the health and safety of the animals. That is in the law. And yet, Director Titigui, Dr. Poole, this administration have allowed that fencing to be larger than that. And we had one dog with a broken leg because of this. Okay? Um, yes, I'm trying to bring their own argument about the fence against them and use it against them. Uh, this, they say it's critical condition. Fine, I'm not gonna argue that. If they want to call it a critical condition, that's fine, I'm gonna use it against them. Okay? They need to stand up for what they're saying and follow through for what they're saying, and not bend the rules, apply the rules unequally and unfairly. Okay? Um, I thank you for your time. I thank you for putting up with my little bit of verb, I'm always a little bit verbose. Uh, and I humbly submit this for the record, um, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. You know, a thought just occurred to me, and it's something based on the testimony offered by the Director of Agriculture. You said that the perimeter fence is necessary so that you could see in to see whether or not the animals escaped from their individual kennels?
(inaudible)
But is the perimeter fence to protect the building or to, to contain the animals?
Contain the animal.
Okay, so why, over the years, why didn't you just recognize that the perimeter fence that, uh, this facility has is the perimeter fence that, that's right outside the individual kennels?
Uh, but it's-
Because when you're talking about a concrete barrier, you're already talking about a building. So this, this animal, proposed animal quarantine facility, it's like an indoor animal quarantine facility. Where, our minds are too wrapped around a perimeter fence back when this law was first established, where it envisions an outdoor kennel facility, right? And so the perimeter fence that, that, that you would think is, is a perimeter fence that goes around the entire, uh, quarantine facility.
Correct.
Correct? But the perimeter fence could also mean, which it should mean, a barrier to prevent the animals from escaping from their individual kennels, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So if that's the case, then if you go into this animal quarantine facility, the proposed, there's a perimeter fence, there's a fence, you have to go through a door to go inside each individual kennel to, um, be able to access each, uh, each dog or cat that's in there, that's contained individually. So couldn't, couldn't you then decided that the perimeter fence in this case is the cyclone fence that you could see through that's in between, uh, the kennels, but it's still indoor? Do you know where I'm getting at?
Yeah. I mean, okay, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, maybe Dr. Poole can further explain on this matter, but like I say, you know, it's just the law that says that you need-
I know.
That's all, you know, that we're-
I know, and, and that, that's why, you know, I appreciate this discussion. I appreciate not only the community's patience, but also, you know, the patience of my colleagues and everyone that's been involved-
I am, yes.
-throughout this, you know, I'm, if we didn't have this law at all, just on the surface of it, you might have concluded that the perimeter fence is the fence that blocks the, it's the perimeter fence outside the individual kennels. Just because this is an indoor facility, you're thinking a perimeter fence is the fence that's wrapped around the facility.
Yes, outside, a double, you know, so just to protect-
So I wanted, I wanted, I wanted just to describe for you, because I know you went to Wise Owl.
Yes.
I want to describe for you and for the people that are following on TV, that, that you go into the building-
Mm-hmm.
And then, so that's one door. You go into a second door-
Correct.
And then each animal is contained in an individual kennel, so that's another door.
Yeah, and it has a fence.
So if you're, if the basis of your testimony, Director, is because you want to make sure the animals don't escape the facility, they're gonna have to go through not one door, not two door, but three doors. But the perimeter fence in this case, uh, should be, have, should have been determined that it's the, it, your perimeter fence is it see-through, like inside the facility? Could you see from, from that perimeter fence, and you can see the individual kennels? And then, when you're standing outside the individual kennel, you could see inside and you can see each dog or cat that's in there?
That's a fence inside the kennel itself that you're talking about.
There's two fences. There's three layers.
The cat, yeah.
No, there's three layers.
The kennel itself.
The first layer is the kennel.
Yes.
Yeah, which is, which is wire mesh, I imagine, and you could see through when there's an individual door, there's a patlock.
Yes.
Right?
I understand, I saw that.
So even if you think that dog is an escape artist and can pick the lock and somehow squeeze himself through that thin wire mesh, they would have to get through that first barrier. The second barrier is the perimeter fence, which is what should have been decided from the beginning, that that's the perimeter fence. It's the perimeter to protect the individual animals that are quarantined from escaping. So then they would have to escape, so that perimeter fence, if that's the definite, if that's to be designated as a perimeter fence, that's wire mesh?
If I may clarify?
Yeah.
Uh, the dogs are in our facility. Uh, the, the concrete wall is about four feet high, and then we have mesh above that, which is one by one or less.
Yeah.
Okay? And you can see into the facility, and you have a door there. That's one barrier. Okay? Uh, if they escape that, they then have to get through either a concrete wall or another door. If they get through that, they have to get through another concrete wall and another door. And the law only requires double entry, which is completed there. If they get through that second door at my facility, they then have to get through another door and another concrete wall. Okay, so they can climb the wall, but we have a concrete ceiling over the entire facility. We've shown in the videos that these dogs climb these chain-link fences. And we've shown in the videos that the Harper quarantine does not have maintenance of the barbed wire on top of it. And we have shown in the videos that Harper facility doesn't have the second fence.
I was just really curious how they're gonna keep on bringing up the double perimeter fence, and yet, when you go to the other facility that's open, they only have one fence around their facility. This is why I'm saying I brought in pictures, I bring in videos, because not everyone has time to go down and check these facilities. The director herself has mentioned to you guys, she is not qualified to inspect this stuff. She gives the authority to Dr. Poole to pass this stuff. How yet, however, in the video, these kennels do not have proper plumbing, these kennels do not have proper electricity, these kennels do not have proper fences, yet they are still allowed to be open. By passing this law, you are strengthening the quarantine law by strengthening it from a two-by-two chain-link fence to concrete. There is no one on Guam that's gonna debate that concrete is stronger than chain-link fence.
Excuse me, that is what they are debating.
Yeah, we understand that, that concrete's stronger, but you know, the law is requiring double, you know, another layer of fencing.
Then please, I urge you, Director, fix the quarantine facility and let it have a double perimeter fence like you just mentioned.
I have been to the Anderson Lada, and I saw they do have a double fencing, so-
I'm not asking about Anderson, ma'am, I'm asking about the facility you personally went down to and inspected with Dr. Poole. It has been open for over 10 years, it does not have a sanitary permit, it does not have an electrical, um, DPW, uh, occupancy permit, it doesn't have any of the things that you have been personally keeping our facility from opening from. I urge you to go down there and, and video it and do it publicly, like you mentioned you would have done the first time you came here. It's supposed to be public with news media and the same inspection form. There was no inspection form until I personally went down to Department of Agriculture, I got arrested at your facility, because I wouldn't leave until you guys showed me on government stationery you had an inspection- stationery you had an inspection form. Still to today, you cannot bring an inspection form to my facility and inspect me legally, and I want to know why. Because at the same time, you're going to use a different inspection form for all the other facilities, and you're going to pass them regardless if the kennel has plumbing or not. These animals, their fecal matter, their urine matter are going through every other kennel when you wash it with the hose. The animal isn't even removed from the cage when you're hosing it down.
That's not the point that-
It is the point, because the point is to-
Whether we are going to have a, you know, to pass the law, whether we're going to have a perimeter fence or a, a, a concrete wall, that's the, the topic for this morning that we want to deal with.
You're right, and I'm trying to deal with the issue of whether or not doing something like this would actually weaken it as opposed to strengthening it. And so, I have, uh, two other individuals that, um, three individuals that wish to testify, but before I dismiss this, uh, panel, I want to ask senators, do they have any questions? Okay, um-
I would like to clarify just a couple little points.
Well, before you do, I, I also, in response to Dr. Yoshiro's testimony, where she alleged that this is being done specifically for one particular person, if that were the case, then this bill would have been introduced and, uh, the words, wires would have been deleted, the word metal would not have been included, and it would just recognize a concrete barrier. That would be the only way to show that this is for one particular, uh, individual, one particular business. But it's, so it's not, so my point is, it's not.
And actually, that's exactly what I want to say. When you contacted me about this law, I asked you to include that metal was allowed, because Dr. Malakuti has built a nice facility, as far as I can see, and there's no reason he should be excluded. I asked you to include that he could have six months to fix the two by two fencing that Dr. Poole and the Director, uh, authorized him to use, which is greater than two by two. I asked you to include that so that he would have time to fix this. Okay? I see no reason to exclude what Dr. Malakuti has done in an effort to improve the quarantine procedures here on Guam. He has to be included in the benefits of this law. And I ask those that were sponsoring this law to please include those items so that he would, his facility would also qualify. Okay? I didn't even ask Dr. Malakuti about this, I just simply asked the senators to include this. We need better quarantine facilities, we need the present quarantine facility to be shut down, we need Gov., Territorial, Ex-Territorial Veterinarian, Dr. Poole and Meritita Titegui to follow the law, which they say they want to do, and apply it equally. And once again, I say that we are clarifying this law because the law says at least a fence. And you all have been in enough legal circles that you know what at least means. I sort of leave it at that. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. So let me, uh, bring up the, the remaining three individuals, uh, so we could, um, hear from them. Thank you. I have, uh, Dr. Palms, uh, Dr. Poole, and Mayor Mantenani. Dr. Poole, before you begin, um, I guess I want to congratulate you for your retirement.
Thank you, Senator.
In order, and the second thing is, do you currently have a contract with the government of Guam?
I, at the moment, I do not currently have a contract.
So this territory is without a territorial veterinarian?
No, I've been appointed, I'm just not being paid. So I was appointed, it's just a single letter, you know, appointing me, I'm just not being paid at the moment.
But is that a standard practice, that the territorial vet be appointed as opposed to going through a contract?
Well, I don't know, um, what's, what's really standard, but I was asked to do it because the procurement process is fairly long, the government could do, I mean, the governor could have done an emergency requisition, but he didn't want to do it that way, they want to go ahead and do it the normal way. And so they asked me if I could, you know, continue to do my duties, and I relinquished the animal control portion of it, but continued to do the other duties, and I said, okay. So I'm not sure how long it's going to last, but it's-
Okay, well, to take that up real soon, I, I was concerned, um, prior to your retirement and immediately thereafter, that we may not be without a territorial vet, and that I've written letters to the Director, and this is the first time getting, uh, this kind of feedback. Okay? So, um, Dr. Palms, you signed up first, I recognize you.
I heard Dr. Poole.
Okay? So, Dr. Poole.
Um, thank you, Senator Rispicio, thank you all. It's a little difficult to know where to start, because most of what I've been listening to has not been true, and so it would take forever to just detail all of that. What we really are talking about is, we're talking about a, a single facility that has been trying to become licensed as a quarantine facility without following the existing laws, and so we're proposing to change those laws. And I have to remind you that this is a facility that was originally built as a, as a family home, it's been converted into a veterinary hospital without ever receiving the permits that were required. The Director of Public Works has testified to that effect, uh, he's turned it over to the Attorney General's Office for prosecution, nothing has happened, but there has never been anything converting that home into a veterinary hospital, much less a rabies quarantine facility. Now, if I could also touch on this, the sort of, uh, gleeful disregard that in my opinion Dr. Joseph has, you know, demonstrated over the years for, for the laws of Guam, you know, one was mentioned where he wrote to the WHL, uh, World Health Organization and to, uh, the State Veterinarian of Hawaii, requesting that they remove Guam's rabies-free status, which is a really dangerous and irresponsible thing to do. It's, there's no way that makes anything better, that was just wild. He, I have to remind you also, that he also claimed that, uh, a child had been bitten by a rabid animal and had been treated at public health for, with rabies prophylaxis. None of that was true, totally false. And, and these are the, just a couple of examples of the really wildly dangerous things that have been done. And so now we're proposing to take a family home that's been illegally converted into a veterinary hospital and convert it into a rabies quarantine facility. Now, we're talking about a lot of this minutia and the detail and the size of fencing and everything, and let, let me try to clarify the fact that the idea of perimeter fencing is not to be able to see all the way through a facility. And as far as these other facilities around the world, uh, military working dog facilities around the world are nearly always enclosed, air-conditioned facilities, but they also have perimeter fencing around them, cyclone fencing that you can see through. And yes, the point of cyclone fencing and being able to see through is not to see through the entire facility, but to be able to see before you open a gate if an animal has escaped these other enclosures. Now, if Dr. Joseph's points were valid, then he could say, an animal's never escaped from our facility. But that's not true, animals have escaped from his facility. I talked to a woman just this week, Ms. Joy Rivera, whose animal escaped from his facility and was hit by a car and killed. It, that's not the only one. So, uh, but I don't mean to pick on just that facility, animals escape from veterinary clinics all the time. It's, it's a, it's a difficult problem that veterinarians have to deal with, because doors open, animals squirt out, they're much faster than we are, they stand behind the door and wait for someone to open it, they escape from veterinary clinics a lot. They're not supposed to escape from rabies quarantine facilities. The beauty of a perimeter cyclone fence with barbed wire on top is that they're extremely difficult for an animal to get out of. And you just have to trust, the rest of the world is doing it that way, including Hawaii, including Australia and New Zealand, including the military. So, the, it not only makes sense, common sense, it is the standard, it is what everyone is doing.
But if your sole argument is to prevent the animal from escaping, this animal has to get through three barriers before it's going to escape.
That's not the sole argument, by the way.
Well, what seems to be your main argument?
Well, that is one of the main arguments, and there's also the fact that you can also see if someone is trying to get in, you can see through, and, and that happens sometimes too, where people are wanting to steal animals from a quarantine facility. So it serves both purposes. And, and I would say that it would be much better for the safety of Guam if Dr. Joseph would take some of this money that he brags about making and simply build a perimeter fence. All of these things he said about Dr. Malakuti's place having internal entrances and all this other stuff is simply not true. And I just wish that we could recognize that this is a very, very important subject, that Guam doesn't owe Dr. Joseph a quarantine facility in his family home where he continues to reside, that was illegally converted into a veterinary hospital, we simply don't owe that to him. If he will build a facility as Dr. Malakuti did with the existing laws in just a few weeks' time, then we're happy to approve it. And that's a facility that would protect Guam, protect the animals, protect our rabies-free status. This just doesn't make sense to me. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Dr. Palms?
Uh, first of all, I endorse Dr. Poole's comments 100%. And what we're doing here is, uh, we're working in haste. First of all, I'm Paul Palmas, I'm a five-state licensed, uh, relief veterinarian, I don't have any real horse in this race, I don't have a financial stake in the outcome of this, uh, quarantine facility or its judgment. I'm just very concerned as a veterinary professional, what I see is, uh, a mismanagement of time and resources trying to approve a facility that on its face does not make any sense from an operational security point of view, from a biosecurity point of view. First of all, this is a lame duck session, we are trying to implement a change in the law that's going to have wide ramifications for a long time, yet it's being rushed through without any real serious review. And that, we are talking about biosecurity regulations that experts spend months on trying to get right so that we won't have an escape. Here, there's been no operational analysis, the basis of all threat analysis is to say, if this happens, under this condition, what will happen? All failures in a major system occur when a chain of little things occur all at once. The big disasters on oil rigs, someone leaves a breaker open, someone doesn't latch a door, someone forgets to lock out a certain device, the wave comes along and poof, the oil rig is now a burning hunk in the Gulf. Same thing can happen with this facility, a door is blocked open for, because the air conditioning is off. Someone just for a moment needs to run and get a dog, so something's left unlatched. All it takes is one chain of events like that and an animal's out the door and on the streets. When you have a cyclone fence with a double entry, where you have to close one gate, open a second gate, you can see where the animals are, that is the last resort prevention of preventing escape, and it's been proven to work. We have not seen any proof that Dr. Joseph's ideas haven't, haven't worked anywhere else. Do you want to make Guam an experimental case? I don't think that's a very wise idea. Second is, he, he brags about his cameras, who is watching the cameras 24 by 7? They take eyes. Cameras are great for analyzing what happens after an escape, they don't do a whole lot for preventing an escape. Preventing escapes requires structural, architectural, tested mechanisms, and that's just not what we have here. The current regulations are simple and easy to understand, the fencing, he keeps harping on fencing, he says two by two, the standard manufacturing is 2.1 by 2.1, then is very fond in measuring it on diagonals, saying it's three inches. Again, this is just one falsehood layered on top of another, and, uh, it's bullshit layered on top of more. I also am concerned that he was allowed to sit here and frankly bullied the Director without any interruption or interception by the Chair. I don't think that's how a meeting should be run. I, I very much respect the Director, and I don't think she deserves that kind of treatment. And that concludes my testimony, thank you very much for your time and attention.
Okay, you must have missed the point when I kept asking each, uh, person testifying to focus on the bill. All right, Dr. Palms?
I am focusing on the bill-
No, no, no.
Because I'm concentrating on the strategic and, uh, technical aspects of what it takes to run a secure facility. This bill does not promote a secure facility. It, in fact, weakens it by eliminating the need for the perimeter fence.
All right, uh, Mayor?
First of all, I want to thank, uh, you Senator Rispicio, Senator Yomashida, Senator Liptakow, and Senator Adap for, uh, hearing us out. Uh, I'm not a professional, but I'm here on behalf of the, me chairing the Straight Out Committee. I think that, you know, some of the testimonies here were actually about, uh, the safety of this facility that we're, we're talking about, and I think that the building that has walls, uh, concrete walls or, or thin walls is, is, uh, let's say, the, the plan A to keep people safe from being bitten or whatever is, is dangerous that, that a dog can, uh, can cost an individual, and I think that the fence is the, the plan B. You know, I think as far, as far as safety is concerned, you should have a plan A and a plan B. You know, I admit, I was at, uh, Dr. Wise Owl's facility, and it's beautiful inside, but you know, following the law and all it says, I guess is, is, is a plan A, and the plan B is the fencing, and I don't see, you know, the money that he spent inside to beautify his, his facility could have been spent for the plan B that, that can, uh, just keeps the, the people inside safe and most especially the people outside safe, you know? Because when plan A doesn't work and plan B is there, maybe you have time to, uh, to, you know, to control the, the problem that, that exists there if plan A doesn't work. You know, God forbid that a, a tourist is just, you know, just being here to visit and is watching and is looking at the, uh, Wise Owl's building, and a dog escapes because the plan B wasn't there and gets bitten and goes back to, to, to his or her island, Japan for that case, and then she catches rabies because of that, because we didn't follow plan B. You know, I think that the, the, the biggest problem here is, you know, them not following the law and just, you know, building, building the fence and let, let's get over this. You know, um, they talk about people violating, violating the, the laws, that's a separate issue. And I, I, you know, I, I, I ask that agriculture, who is ever responsible for these laws that are not being followed, to give them citation, this has nothing to do with the law that, that, you know, a quarantine should have for safety purposes. And you know, it's, it's all about safety, man, and I think that the building that exists there is beautiful and it has plan A, but where's plan B? And you know, God forbid that, that, that Wise Owl's, uh, uh, facility catches fire and they have to open all the doors and the dogs run out, where's plan B? You know, what's going to keep the dogs inside the, the facility to, you know, safeguard the people that are around there? Remind you, that's a business area, and everybody that comes around there are innocent. They're innocent bystanders, and God forbid, like I said, that plan B is not there, and I think that that's what that fence is there for. I don't have any problems with those walls, you know, not, people not being able to see out or see in, that's not the point. The point is, the law was made, and you know, it's serving its purpose, why try to fix something that's not broken? You know, I'm just here, you know, for the community and because I, I, I stand for the, the, the committee that, that I, I lead, and it has something, a lot to do with keeping the dogs safe and, and the people safe. And I think that's, that's all that is, is the fence, and if Dr. Joseph builds the fence, everything will be okay. And whoever is not following the law, find them, but that's a separate issue here. And I really don't appreciate it, you know, that, you know, the governor's not here and, you know, we're talking about the governor, and that has nothing to do with this, has completely nothing to do with this. This is about the, the law that you guys are trying to pass and whether it, it safeguards what it's supposed to safeguard, and I think that that second, that fence does make the, the quarantine facility safer. That's all I have to say. And I thank you very much for listening, and I hope that you do diligence about what's going on here, because this is all about the people, the people we serve. Thank you.
Okay, and I don't want anybody to have a misunderstanding that by me sponsoring this bill, that I don't want to serve the people.
I didn't, I never said that.
No, but just, I'm just, just as you guys are sensitive, I'm also, um, wanting to make sure that I clarify myself every step of the way.
Yes, but I'm, Senator, with all due respect, I'm the one that's speaking, I never said anything about you not respecting anybody.
Correct, correct.
You brought that up yourself.
No, Mayor, correct.
I never mentioned anything about that.
No, ma'am, but correct, but if in the event this bill moves forward, you're attaching this legislation to being irresponsible, correct?
Yes, I am.
So I'm, so, so, I'm explaining- So, I'm explaining my position and why I sponsored this bill. And the question I have is, you know the concrete barrier, right, that we're talking about? The wall, the perimeter fence right now, it's a concrete wall.
Senator, are you talking to me?
I'm talking, well, I'm...
Because I still have the floor here.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to generate a conversation to ask, if that cement wall were cyclone fence, would this building comply?
You're talking about, may I ask, Mayor, or Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, I thought you were done, Mayor.
No.
You're not done? Go ahead.
Well, I'm saying that, you know, if this bill that you're introducing is saying that we should eliminate the fence, then I don't support that.
It's not saying you eliminate the fence. It's saying you also recognize a concrete barrier.
Well, I don't know why we should have a bill, you know, that says that. It's there. You know, whoever recognizes that, it doesn't matter. It's in the law. I don't understand that. You know, there's a lot of things that've been said here that confuses me.
Correct. And that's why I'm trying to clarify, and this is not something that we're just doing at the 11th hour. I said, this is probably a decade-old problem, right? And I've had a series of status hearings over the last several months to try to resolve why the Department of Agriculture refuses to permit this particular facility, and it failed. And the reason for the inspection was because it didn't have a cyclone perimeter fence.
That's why. That's why they're not approving it. You know, Senate...
Even the director, even Dr. Poole said, well, if you want to change the law, change the law. But it's, in his opinion, it's with consequences, right? So I'm asking, this concrete barrier, because I want the public to understand that the animal would have to go through three doors, three barriers, in order to escape that building.
I understand that, Senator.
So if this concrete barrier, that's the main, the first entrance, if that were cyclone fence, would this building comply? No, I'm not asking the mayor. I'm asking the, sorry, Mayor. I'm jumping here. But I want to get to the heart of my question, that if the concrete barrier, and you know, I'm talking about the first main entrance, if that concrete barrier was a cyclone fence, would this facility comply?
I can answer that, Senator. Like I repeated myself, you know, God forbid if the building was on fire, what is there if they have to open the door? So what is there to protect the animal from, you know, leaving the premises? It's the fence. It doesn't matter. And I don't understand that. Why is he improving the building? And that's not what the law says. The law, you know, is specific, and it tells you that you have to put a double door on the, inside the building, and the plan B is outside the fence. And I really think that that's why they put that, you know, the requirement that they have a double fence or a single fence for that matter is even better. It's, God forbid, if the building gets on fire and they cannot, they cannot control the dogs. I think that one of the things that will protect that predicament is the fence outside. I mean, what's going to protect the people, you know, in the premises if the fence is not there and the building gets on fire and hell breaks loose and they cannot control the dogs? You know, there's a lot of tough guys here, but they're scared of dogs, and I don't know how many firemen are not scared of dogs and will try to protect the people that can be harmed by the dogs being loose when there's a fire. That's just one predicament that I think that says that a fence makes it, makes protecting the people, because that's what, that's what this is all about, to protect the people. And I think that cannot, that strengthens the, what the law states and what the law is all about, to protect the people and the animal that's in there. And I don't see why we should change that. It's not broken. Let's not try to fix something that's not broken. We're spending too much money here, people's time and all that, and I don't know, you know, this thing should, and correct me if I'm wrong, should have been a roundtable discussion and have the people that's involved deal with it. I don't think the public should be involved here. You know, this is like dividing the public, and I think it's our job to get with the job on hand and fix it before we make the public get involved, because it's, the more people get involved with things like this, it's bad.
Mayor, I've actively brought this issue out over the last several months. This is probably our fourth or fifth status hearing. You were here at one of those status hearings when you talked about how you were there with the director and you did the inspection.
Yes.
So, you know, please just understand that this is not something I'm trying to rush, and it's been...
Sir, I, please forgive me if I said that.
Again?
But I never said that you're rushing it, and this has nothing to do, what I'm saying has nothing to do with you, Senator. It's just about following the law, that's all. I'm not attacking you.
But you're talking about dividing the community and bringing the community in. This was, all my public hearings were publicly announced, and so we had a series of status hearings, where the culmination of these status hearings, where I believe this is, this is a proposed solution to recognize that that quarantine facility will meet the standard if this bill passes. Because you have three barriers before the animal has to escape, and there's other quarantine facilities that recognize concrete barriers.
I have no problem with that.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. But in this case, other facilities have a concrete perimeter fence, and it's okay, but on Guam, we have to have a cyclone fence?
That, well...
And if the main argument, as the director pointed out, these animals, it weakens it because these animals can escape? I'm trying to paint a picture for you. You were there. The animal would have to go through three solid perimeter, three solid barriers in order to get out into the community.
I understand that.
And before the staff would open up the main door, close the door, go to another area, open up that door, close that door, then go into the individual kennel. How is that weakening the quarantine facility process?
I don't, well, I'm not saying that that's weakening the process. Actually, that's making it stronger. But the requirement is that you have the perimeter fences, and that's not being done. Right? Well, like I said, okay, let's not get involved, let's not get these things involved, okay? Correct that part, and let's move on with this.
Also, I think it's an issue of parity. From the very beginning, I said, how you treat one, you should treat the others. When the director finally inspected this Wise Owl facility, she used a different standard from how the other twos were inspected.
Senator...
This issue will not end in this term, I can assure you that. We can be here every month until everybody's treated the same way. And then, and I don't believe that what I'm doing, Mayor, is wasting the people's time, wasting resources. When you expose these kinds of things and how some people are treated differently than others, I don't think that's a waste of time.
Well, I'm not here to argue that, Senator. That's not what I'm here for.
You just said we're wasting our time with this thing.
No, but you're talking about being partial. I don't know anything about that, and that's not what I'm here for. That's what I'm saying. I'm just here to state my case, and I think that the, what is not being followed here is the perimeter fence, and, you know, just because that's not being followed, everything's being blown out of proportion, that's all I'm saying. And I don't want to get into those issues about anybody being partial to anybody, because I don't want to get there. I have enough problems, let alone getting involved with something like that.
Okay.
Senator, if I could address, if what you said were true, then we wouldn't have...
If what you said were true also, sir.
What are you talking about?
What are you talking about?
I'll tell you if you'll let me speak.
I am letting you speak.
No, you interrupted me, Senator. I'm trying to tell you that if what you said were true about that if, that these concrete walls would be fine, it's impossible for an animal to escape, if that were true, then we wouldn't have animals, boarded animals, escaping from veterinary clinics all the time. They wouldn't have escaped from Dr. Joseph's clinic. But the fact is, for the reasons that Dr. Palmas said, that you, that's why you have redundant layers, because doors do end up being left open. One person's coming in while another person's doing another thing, and these things dart out. Just trust me that it happens. And, no, don't trust me, but I can produce lots of episodes of that sort of thing where it happens, where these animals escape. And just as Mayor Montanani said, that's the beauty of the perimeter fence, is this great catch-all. Whenever your other layers of defense fail, you still have that final layer that is very, very difficult to penetrate, for an animal to get over a fence with the internal barbed wire. And it's not just my opinion, it's the opinion of the Department of Defense, it's how Hawaii does it, and Australia, and New Zealand. And I can't promise this, but I suspect strongly that if we, if this bill passes and we approve this, that we will very likely lose our rabies-free status simply for the weakness of our quarantine facility. Of taking a family residence and calling it a quarantine facility with no perimeter fencing, I think would be extremely dangerous. And the purpose serves the interests of only one man. It doesn't serve the community. There's three quarantine facilities that are up and running, there's good competition, and we can make his a quarantine facility too, if he'll simply do due diligence and build a perimeter fence with barbed wire. Then, fine, nobody's picking on him.
Dr. Poole, how can you say that when over the years, you prevented this business from even being in existence?
It never, I followed the law, Senator.
But you refuse to, you refuse to conduct an inspection.
There was no fence, Senator.
But that's why I forced an inspection, so that the department can go there, do an inspection, come up with its checklist of what they didn't comply with, so that they would know what else they need to do.
Senator...
We would have not been here today if we didn't, if we didn't require that inspection to occur.
We shouldn't be here today, Senator, because he's never complied with the law. You've never asked him to. You've never asked him to get an occupancy permit or to build a fence or do anything to comply.
He claims he has an occupancy permit that you refuse to recognize.
The director of Public Works said he does not, and turned it over to the Attorney General's office.
I don't know, Dr. Poole.
You don't think that's true, sir?
It's not true.
It is true.
I don't know. Dr. Poles, and then I have one more person signed up, and then we'll just ask if there's any questions, and then we'll conclude the hearing on this bill.
I'm really just astonished that it's gone on to this degree and this far, because the perimeter fence is such an obvious, to anyone who has any sort of background in this field, of why it's there. It's to give people time to reflect and react in a calm way to an escape. The fence is not used on daily basis for people going to a treatment room. It's not used to go between a waiting room area and an exam area. It's a fence whose only purpose is to let people in and out, animals in and out, and there's big dead space on each side, so that there's time to reflect and react when there is an escape. And not to have it is just, it's just an irresponsible thing to do. It denigrates the security of the facility by a huge degree and does not improve the third wall, this bogus third wall, this bogus concrete wall, which is all part of the facility, does not matter, because it's part of the operational aspect of the clinic as a clinic, as a facility. The fence serves the purpose of isolating the clinic from the street.
The proposed bill does not eliminate the need for a perimeter fence.
You're calling it something different, but you're, and you're putting it in a different place, but it's still part of the building. If he builds an eight-foot concrete wall around the rough sidewalk, where there's a green space of at least 40 feet, then that might qualify.
But that's not even a requirement of the current law. You're adding additional requirements of the current law. I just simply took the same section that requires a perimeter fence and recognized a concrete wall.
As long as it's separate from the building.
And I'm not changing that.
It can't be part of the building.
A separate entrance, not separate from the building, separate entrance, and that's what the current...
The perimeter fence is required to be separate from the building.
The current regulation just requires a separate entrance. So now you're, you want to propose something different? I'm open to entertaining that. But for now, I'd appreciate if the comments you're making is really reflective of what I'm trying to do here. I'm not eliminating the need for a perimeter fence.
You're trying to favor one facility over another.
Absolutely not.
I disagree, Senator. That's exactly what you're doing.
I'll recognize you, and then we'll wrap up.
Oh, thank you. Just to answer the question, or just to put it out...
Please just state your name and...
My name is Rosano Fernandez. I work at Wise Owl. I just wanted to state that with the fire issue or whatnot, we do fire drills and we do fire inspections, just so that it's known that we do.
Okay. Any comments or... Okay, I thank all of you for your participation. I certainly do appreciate the feedback and how I would be guided, and I'm sure how my colleagues would be guided on this issue. Okay, the next bill is Bill number, Bill number 425. It's introduced by Senator Lintiaco and myself, and it's an act to add a new Chapter 10, Article 1, to Title 22 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the establishment of the Apprenticeship Act of Guam, to add Article 2 to Chapter 10 of Title 22 of GCA, relative to establishment of the labor standards for the registration of apprenticeship programs, and to add Article 3 to Chapter 10 of Title 22, also the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the establishment of a state plan for equal employment opportunity in the Guam Apprenticeship Act. And so I'd like to recognize Senator Lintiaco, who is the main sponsor of the bill. But before he does that, let me just get him situated by having the first panel that will testify. So I invite the Director of Labor, Mr. Manny Cruz, Ms. Phyllis Tapasna, Mr. James Martinez. Okay, I only have three individuals who signed up for this bill. Are there any more in the audience? Okay. Mr. Martinez? Okay. We're all good, right? So I'd like to recognize the sponsor, Senator Lintiaco, at this time for an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your cosponsorship of this bill as well. Thank you for the panel for providing testimony. In November 2011, the U.S. Department of Labor has formally recognized the Guam Department of Labor as the state apprentice agency, which is authorized to oversee the island's registered apprentice program system, which we currently have. In the past, we had been required to submit these approvals through different states. I believe we had been sending it to Hawaii, and I think we're currently sending it to San Francisco. But this formal recognition will allow us to authorize those companies and apprentice applications here locally, which would only enforce, excuse me, reinforce our commitment to workforce development. So Bill 425 is a legislation that will affirm this recognition through legislation, and look forward to our colleagues' support of the bill. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Lintiaco. Director will begin with you.
Good morning and afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. My name is Manuel Kedigwa Cruz, better known as Manny Cruz. I am currently serving as the Director of the Guam Department of Labor. I come before you to testify in support of Bill Number 425-32, an act to adding a new Chapter 10, Article 1, to Title 22 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the establishment of the Apprenticeship Act of Guam, to add Article 2 to Chapter 10 of Title 22 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the establishment of the labor standards for the registration of apprenticeship, of apprenticeship programs, and to add Article 3 to Chapter 10 of Title 22 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to the establishment of a state plan for equal employment opportunity in Guam in the Guam Apprenticeship Act. In November 2011, the U.S. Department of Labor had formally recognized the Guam Department of Labor as the state apprenticeship agency, which is authorized to oversee the island's registered apprenticeship system. Guam's now federally recognized registered apprenticeship program will expand career pathways that lead to good jobs for the island's workforce. Participants in Guam Apprenticeship Program will receive a nationally recognized credential, and employers will benefit from a highly skilled workforce that is trained to industry standards. It is in tandem purpose of Bill Number 425-32 to affirm this recognition through legislation. The Guam Department of Labor has worked closely with the Office of Apprenticeship of the U.S. Department of Labor's Employment and Training Administration, ETA, to develop a registered apprenticeship system. This ETA's recognition of the Guam Department of Labor as a state apprenticeship agency will support the island's effort to improve opportunities for the local workforce through the registered apprenticeship earn and learn model, which prepares participants for highly skilled careers while allowing them to earn a paycheck. In July 2011, Governor Eric Cahu submitted formal documentation requesting ETA's recognition of the Guam Department of Labor as the agency to facilitate apprenticeship programs and agreements. In addition to Guam, ETA's Office of Apprenticeship has formally, has formally recognized apprenticeship agencies in 24 states, the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, and the U.S. Virgin Islands. Funding for the Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program at the Guam Department of Labor had always been a longstanding issue, but with the enactment of Public Law 32-181... had always been a longstanding issue, but with the enactment of Public Law 32-181, the Budget Act for the Executive Branch for fiscal year 2015, the Guam Department of Labor was finally allocated $113,520 from the General Fund to fund two positions for the Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program. The program can now move forward. Prior to this, even though the Guam Department of Labor has no funded position, it was able to perform the duties of the Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program through the leveraging of federal funds under the Workforce Investment Act, WIA. In 2006, Public Law 24-141 was enacted to create a Guam Registered Apprenticeship Program, commonly known as GRAB, for the main purpose of issuing tax rebates to employers for providing training to their apprentices. Funding, though, was not provided. Bill Number 425-32 appears to have addressed most of the concerns that we have with the establishment of the Guam State Apprenticeship Agency at the Guam Department of Labor. However, we do have some recommendations. Number one, to delete Article 2 on page 5, which is Section 102,01 to 102,13, and Article 3, Sections 103,01 to 103,22, and instead add a new paragraph to Article 1 to read that the provisions incorporated in Title 29 Code of Federal Regulations, Part 29, also known as the Labor Standards for the Registration of Apprenticeship Programs, and Part 30, also known as Equal Employment Opportunity in Apprenticeship, as amended, shall serve as the basic set of procedures, guidelines, and regulations governing the application of the registered apprenticeship program in Guam and are hereby adopted as guidelines and procedures of the agency, which is the Guam Department of Labor, to the extent not inconsistent with Guam law, subject to later amendments or repeal by the Director of Labor. Number two, revise Section 101,04A to read, "There is established within the Guam Department of Labor Division of Apprenticeship the Guam State Apprenticeship Council. The council shall comprise of five members to be appointed by the governor with the recommendation of the Director of Labor. Four of the members of the council shall be persons knowledgeable with apprenticeship occupations, with an equal number of representatives of employer and employee organization. One member of the council shall be the Director of Labor. With the exception of the Director of Labor..." Excuse me. "With the exception of the Director of Labor, the four members appointed by the governor shall serve for a term of three years, provided, however, that of the members first appointed, one shall be appointed for a term of one year, and two shall be appointed for terms of two years. Three members of the council shall constitute a valid quorum for all purposes. Ex officio members may be added to the council, but shall have no vote. In the event of a tie, the Director of Labor shall have the breaking vote." Number three, revise Section 101,07 to read, "This law, when passed, and any future amendments to the law, will become effective upon the approval of the Administrator Office of Apprenticeship of the U.S. Department of Labor." This concludes my testimony. In closing, I want to thank Senator Mike Lintiaco for pursuing the introduction of Bill Number 425-32 and to you, Mr. Chairman, as the co-sponsor. Also, thank you and the members of the committee for allowing me to testify today on Bill 425-32. Senator Mas.
Thank you for your testimony. So I don't lose this thought, and before I go to Phyllis or James. Director, I understand the need for the third item, but is there a way we can word this so that we don't make a legislature and an act of Guam subject to a federal entity? The legislature would pass this if it does. The governor would sign it, and we're admitting that this doesn't take effect until a federal agency approves it, and I am very uncomfortable about that.
Well, I'm sorry if I made-- Thank you. The stipulation of Guam being a state apprenticeship agency, as with all the other agencies, is that the U.S. Department of Labor ETA, Employment and Training Administration's Office of Apprenticeship, must approve any changes before they are enacted. So that's why that language was put into the law.
Will we still accomplish this if we just remain silent? Senator Lintiaco?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, I believe that the law in its current form was already approved by the federal agency, correct?
Yes. We, the draft was... You want to understand that this is a federal, actually a federal activity, and they're delegating Guam to be an agency to help the Department of Labor.
Correct. And the draft was already approved in its current form. The amendments that you're calling for with the deletions of Article 2 and 3 are really just administrative in a sense, right? Because they're just reciting the FAR.
Yeah.
Or, I'm sorry, they're just reciting the CFR. So all you're really attempting to do in deleting Articles 2 and 3 is rather than recite the CFR, verbatim, you're basically just referring to it as the guideline. So do you feel that this revision would not be approved by the federal agency? Or do you feel that it's in line with the draft and you see no issues with it being approved?
It should be approved.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, that might clarify. The draft version has already been approved, so we don't foresee any issues with the delay of the approval.
Okay. But do we have to say that this law would be effective upon the approval of the Administrator Office of Apprenticeship, U.S. Department of Labor? Will we accomplish the same thing if we just don't say anything about it?
Uh...
I don't want to start establishing precedent--
I understand what you're trying to say.
We already know that the United States is supreme over the government of Guam, but do we really have to say that?
Well, if it's understood, as Mr. Chairman, then I don't think we have any problems with it. But the fact remains that if they're going to make any changes, because these are federal mandates already for them, and if the local government plans to make any change to the federal mandate, that we have to get with.
Yeah, then we become noncompliant. But then if we need to change, then the next legislature would have to come in and change it. Yeah.
Well, that's how it's done. You know, as the delegate, the states and the territories, to run this program, it was with this understanding because one of the signatory of the certificates is still the Secretary of Labor. So in that respect, they still have ownership of the program per se. So that's what we're saying here, that if they're going to be making any changes to be done, then we just have to clear with them. That's all.
But it doesn't prevent us from having this kind of program if we're able to fund it locally. So I'm concerned that we're going to make the whole law subject to the approval of the federal entity when there's nothing that prevents us from doing a great program like Senator Lintiaco's suggesting, locally, provided we have local funds to do it. So just think about that. We're going to move very fast on this bill because we have session in December, and I'm hoping that with the author and with the director and the Department of Labor, I'm hoping we can think a little bit more about what you're suggesting us to do in your third request. Okay? I just don't want any snags on the floor, and I have oversight over federal territorial affairs, and my colleagues will say, "You're doing what?"
Yeah.
You know, I don't want to add insult to injury, right, of our political status, and it speaks to a larger context of what we have to deal with ordinarily, and I don't want to have our own local laws recognize that, oh, we know our hands are tied, and we know that we're not going to do anything unless a secretary of a federal entity approves.
Not a secretary, just an administrator.
I mean, I'm sorry, an administrator at that level. Okay? Phyllis, would you like to go next? Or you're here to support your director? That's what I thought. Okay, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you very much, Chairman Speccio, and members of the committee. Senator Lintiaco, please introduce yourself. I want to introduce Phyllis Speccio, Senator Lintiaco. You're very good. There you go. That helps.
You can start all over again.
You can start all over again. Good morning. Just kidding. Thanks for giving the opportunity for the Guam Contractors Association to talk a little bit about the Bill Number 425-32. My name is James Martinez. I am the President of the Guam Contractors Association, and we stand in support of Bill 425-32. To give a little bit of background, we are a sponsor of registered apprenticeship training here on the island, and of course, other sponsors. It could be an association, a trade organization, or individual employees. In the past, we had to report to the Honolulu office when we registered these apprentices, and under the guidance of then the Director who oversaw Region 9, Mr. Al Vaez, before he retired, that was his goal, that he would make Guam a state agency for apprenticeship so we don't have to go through those hoops and hurdles over in Hawaii or even in San Francisco. And so I'm glad that this has come to fruition. It makes things a lot easier for those who are registering apprentices. And my understanding is, on this draft, is pretty much mirroring the federal regulations, rules and regulations, and CFR on apprenticeship training, so I have no problems with that. I did allude to a certain section there, but again, it's a minor change, and I hope I don't have to go through a federal thing to do this. But we're talking about the definition of an employer, and it means it's a person or organization employing an apprentice, whether or not such person or organization is a party to an apprenticeship agreement with the apprentice. I really don't know why that's there, just because the employers are really an integral part in the apprenticeship agreement. And again, it's just something minor that we could--
You're on page 5, right? You're on page 5.
Page 9, on the definition for employer. And then on page 19, apprenticeship agreement, it says, "The apprenticeship agreement must contain explicitly or by reference names and signatures of the contracting parties, apprentice, and the program sponsor, or employer, and the signature of a parent or guardian if the apprentice is a minor." Again, it's a very minor change that we're looking at, and I hope we don't need to have an act of Congress to make that change, but the employer is an integral part of this apprenticeship agreement and should say "and employer." If anything, it should say "or" program sponsor. The Guam Contractors Association is a program sponsor for registered apprentices. In other words, we develop the standards to get approved by the agency, state agency, to approve our standards. We are a member organization, so if they don't want to be a sponsor, you know, on their own right as an employer, they can be a sponsor through the Guam Contractors Association, which means they have to follow our standards for what we prescribed in our apprenticeship standards for the different trades. But we require that the employer is a part signatory on the apprenticeship agreement because there are steps that the apprentices need to complete in order to get a stepping in a pay raise. And Guam Contractors Association is certainly not going to pay that employee, it's the employer. So it's very important that we have the employer name on the agreement because when they complete the number of hours for instructional classroom training and the number of hours of on-the-job training, it's the employer who has to pay that increase for the apprentice who's graduating to the next level or to the next year. But all in all, again, that's just a minor thing that we could do in-house, but we support the bill, and I agree with Senator Speccio, the chairman, that I don't know if we need to have... Once the bill is passed, it's already been approved, from what I understand, by the federal government, the draft was at any rate, should be approved after it's passed by law. It's like, why bother passing the law? Just let them pass it, you know? So I think that it should be kept locally and passed, and let's go move forward. We don't need to go back and get another approval for the program to become law here on Guam. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your participation and your input. Can I ask the Department of Labor to speak to those two concerns before I open this up for questions? On the first concern with the employer, can we make that recommendation without...
Well, actually, the agreement that James is referring to is an... It's actually an Employment Training Administration form. It's Form ETA 671. So we can go ahead and put both the sponsor and the employer on it.
Well, that was for page 19, where he--
Yeah.
On line 25, I guess after the word employer--
On page 9?
No.
19.
19? This is the second thing he brought up, too, just the words "or" program sponsor. So is that correct? On line 25 will be sponsor, change the order, comma, employer, or program sponsor?
Yeah, I would prefer that, yeah, you put "and" employer because they are an integral part in the program and--
We can do that. I don't see a problem with that.
Senator Lintiaco, did you get that? Just--
Yes, Mr. Chair, and if the committee by your chairmanship were to implement the Department of Labor's recommendations, actually, that entire section would be deleted and would be referenced to the CFR. But if I understand it correctly, the current apprentice agreements for all those that have already been approved, the companies that have already been approved, there are the sections in there that require the employer to sign on there. So I think, James, your main concern is because the Trades Academy and the Contractors Association could be viewed as somewhat of a program sponsor, right? There might be a kind of... You'd want that clarified, that it's not necessarily the Trades Academy or the Contractors Association, but the employer.
Yeah, the Trades Academy is an education, yes, an education facility--
Right.
--that facilitates the training, but is not necessarily a program sponsor. We are, as an employer group, for our members, are a program sponsor of registered apprenticeship programs, which we create and submit for approval the standards, and we try to update that once at least every three years to include new standards or to change some standards to be current with our curriculum. And so the Guam Contractors Association is a program sponsor for registered apprenticeship programs for our members. Now, our members may choose to follow our standards, or they can be their own program sponsor to create their own standards that is specific to their company. Ours is kind of broad, general-based for contractors, pipeline, and maintenance organizations. But a company may choose to be a program sponsor and develop their own standards, again, specific to their needs for their company.
Right. And just for clarification purposes, I think that the agreement itself, though, is company-specific as opposed to, you know, recognizing GCA as a program sponsor. Is that correct?
Like I said, it actually just refers, the apprenticeship agreement that is being referred to here is actually the registration agreement between the apprentice and the employer and the sponsor. So it's just actually a form that ETA developed. And so James is just wanting to make sure that, you know, we do include the program sponsor, and if the employer is not the program sponsor, then also include the employer in the form itself.
Yeah, because there's some standards, I mean, the minimum requirement, let's say, for classroom instruction is like 146 hours per year. Some of our standards, and actually, most of our standards for individual classes exceed that. Some are 200, some are 220, 20 hours. So we want to make sure that the employer understands that they are operating under our sponsorship--
I see.
--and our standards because they can question, well, it says here that the Department of Labor only requires a minimum 146 hours, but you're doing 200. Well, you know, we want to raise the standard on our, in the curriculum that we chose to teach, and that's why it's crucial that they know that and they understand that it's not just 146 hours because our standards calls for, you know, more than that, maybe 200 hours, 180 hours, depending on the trade.
Okay. So please clarify again, what is your recommendation? Because she started with the thing on page 19.
Yeah, I just wanted to include that make it "and" employers, but those are done internally because there's a space, line item on there, but it's not--
So can you go to page--
--in the particular law that says that they have to.
Yeah, James, can you go to page 19 and just, just so we can get on the record, your amendment?
Okay.
Your proposed, your proposal.
I just changed the word "or." "The apprenticeship agreement must contain explicitly or by reference, a, names and signatures of the contracting parties, apprentice, the program sponsor, and employer."
Okay.
And again, that includes the employer because when they complete the course--
So change order and?
Yeah.
And you're okay with that? Now, can you go back to your concern about the definition of employer? Page 9? Page nine?
Employer means any person or organization employing an apprentice, whether or not such person or organization is a party to an apprenticeship agreement with the apprentice. But by changing that, now they become a part of the apprenticeship agreement.
So there's no, we don't do anything with that? Yeah, okay.
There's no changes on that, actually.
Senator Yamashita?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here. So let me understand, this was already reviewed, this was already approved by somebody, and that had to be done before we can consider it?
The law is, I mean, the bill is presented to you? Yeah, it had to have been approved by the U.S. ETA's Office of Apprenticeship before we can be designated as a state apprenticeship agency, because they are the ones, the U.S. Department of Labor actually says, "Okay, Guam, you can be a state apprenticeship agency under the U.S. Department of Labor."
And that is, I haven't actually studied this, and I will study it before we put it on the floor, but, so a main benefit from being identified as such is the reciprocity issue. Is that correct? That anybody who graduates from this or becomes, goes through the apprenticeship program and succeeds, when they go to another state, they would be acknowledged or recognized? The reciprocity?
Anyone who graduates from the apprenticeship program, their certificate is a mobile thing. They can take it anywhere, not just in the United States, actually. It's in the entire world, and it'll be recognized.
So this is actually a template document?
Well, we worked with the U.S. Department of Labor in putting it together, but if you really take a look at it, it's almost taking the language out of twenty-nine CFR twenty-nine-
Uh-huh.
-which is the apprentice agreement, and twenty-nine CFR thirty, which is the employment, equal employment opportunity program. And it's almost word for word, except for when it refers to Guam, it says Guam.
Okay, so on page sixteen, this is, defines the standard for, bless you, standards of apprenticeship. And I'm believing this talks about the expertise, and in line one, it meets GDOE's requirements for a voc tech instructor. Unless things have really changed at GDOE, and unless they reverted, we no longer have voc tech instructors at DOE, but we have great partnerships with GCC. And so that's something I'll further look into, but I don't believe that that is correct. But we will look into it. But you also have "or be a subject matter expert." So that, you know, that's that. And my thought is that this is what's going to help you articulate with our school system, so that we motivate and inspire those kids who are there-
Right.
-to say that this is something that you might want to be able to study and start exploring, right? So that was one thing. I have two other questions. One is, how do we ensure that those of us with disabilities are welcomed and included in this whole program?
That's where you come in with the EEO statement. You have the, what is the twenty-nine CFR thirty? That's equal employment opportunity. As long as the individual meets the physical requirements or the requirements of the position, there's no reason to overlook an individual with a disability.
But what if they don't?
Well, then that would make them ineligible for the occupation.
I know, excuse me, I know in our industry, you know, there are job tasks and occupations that don't really, you know, match some of those folks with disabilities, but they are, there are some occupations that can. An example is painting, for instance. You know, you can have someone who has a disability, as long as they've got their arms can hold a pole, it's a repetitive process that they can do, you know, painting. So that's something that we're looking at. We've never had anyone actually apply, that I know of, for courses in painting or other trades programs because of their disability, and I don't know why that is. We never put a sign that said, "Sorry, those that are disabled don't come in," but we encourage them, because, you know, we're looking for a local workforce instead of hiring from off-island. And there's, certainly, there's going to be opportunities for those types of folks. Maybe not, you know, something like, maybe even a heavy equipment operator can do that if they've got the use of their arms and-
Yeah.
-the company can adjust the machines to put hand controls on there. That's, you know, something they could look at, but certainly, they can operate something like that.
Yeah, you know, and so, and thank you, because it is about accommodations, and it is about awareness, and it is about encouraging, right? That's what it is about. It is about workforce development, and it is about workforce development for all of us, even the ten percent of us who are just different. That's what this is about. And so, again, I haven't studied this, and I will study it before it makes session floor. And I appreciate the real honesty about it being pretty much a template piece of legislation. And as the Oversight Chair, and our Oversight Chair right now has stated, we want to make sure that, you know, while it is respectful of our national standards, that we also are respectful of the cultural competencies on our island. James, I really appreciate what you said, because we have so many people on this island who are capable of working, but feel so shut out. And those people, the people that I know in this world of disabilities, can be some of the best workers ever, because they want to work, and they will come to work, and they will work, but they do need some accommodations. So, you know, I'm going to look at this and study it, and hopefully, it is in the December session, so that I can actually participate in it. The other question I had was, you have a, I know I saw it back here, is a council, an advisory council? Is that what it's called? And so could you tell me where that page is, just so I could be a little bit smart about it?
It's actually referred to in ten, one oh four.
And could you tell me what page that is? By chance?
Page three, sorry.
Page what?
Page three.
Three, thank you. And so the governor appoints, and there are four people, I don't know, I think I read four before, who are knowledgeable apprenticeship programs, which I think is, of course, makes sense. Now, could you tell me that, and this has been going on, and the reason why you got this recognition is because you've been doing a really good job, and you've had Region Nine say, "Wow, you know, Guam is deserving," right? And so somebody went through all of the processes, and so you really are to be commended for what you have done, because this is huge. We finally got acknowledged for what you have done. Historically, who is on this council? Is it representative of GDOE, GCC, Contractors Association, community leadership? Is that how it's usually, because I, again, it's, I can't see it right now, but what I did scan was that it's, is it representative of the people who need to be on this, or do we need to make it more specific?
We have to remember, Senator, that this is an industry-driven program, and so we need people who are going to be members to be familiar with the industry and to be familiar with the apprenticeship program itself. In other words, the advisory council, actually, I mean, this council actually is supposed to help the director, you know, in making decisions. So in other words, if there's a complaint, a concern, and so forth, then the council will be the ones to hear it.
Oh, so this is an arm of the director to help resolve conflicts?
Yes.
But does it also have a vision, and does it dream, and does it say, "This is how we're going to," for example, "work with Mr. Martinez here in inspiring and motivating more of our kids to become a part of his association?" I mean, is that-
Well, for example, if there's a new industry that develops here on the island and needs to go into the apprenticeship program, this will be the council that would look into that request, for example, because all the occupation has to be approved by the U.S. Department of Labor. So in other words, if a landscaping program develops, you need some standards of how that apprenticeship program is going to be developed. And this is the reason why I mentioned the fact that if there is any accommodation needed, the industry itself will have that provision. Any of the industry will have that provision. So what we're saying here, that we rely on the U.S. Department of Labor to make that assignment. So in other words, if there's an apprenticeship, an industry here in Guam that needs to have apprentices, we ask the U.S. Department of Labor to help us. And if they decide that it is an industry that merits an apprenticeship program, because all of the standards have to be done by the U.S. Department of Labor.
Again, I appreciate the national standards, and what I am suggesting is, well, if there are national standards, we also have our local standards. And I don't think anything prevents us from having our local standards being even broader, more inclusive, and more respectful of our island needs. I don't think we would ever violate, well, we would never want to violate the national standards of what brought us to here, but to be, to be, to further reach the people who need the labor development, the job opportunities, our demographics are such that, you know, ten percent of our population, they don't apply because they don't know that they can. They already know that there are these things, and if I read it, you know, "Well, I don't know how to do it, so I can't," but if we provide accommodations, they can. And that's where our work, my work now, right, as I step away from this legislature, I see what needs to happen more for human capital, right? And that's my work now, right? So that's what I'm saying. I'm not asking you to break national standards, and I, again, I'm going to study this, and my guess is it's going to make the December session, and so then, at that point, the deliberation will make it on the floor.
And the whole thing here, Senator, is that if you are working towards, let's say, becoming a journeyman, that those journeyman standards is a national standard, sometimes it's international. So if we're just looking at just doing a local apprenticeship program and just Guam, you know, exclusive, just inclusive in Guam, that can easily be worked out. But if you want this person to be, you know, to be skillful enough to merit a journeyman certificate where he can go anywhere in the world, that standard has to be, has to be complied for.
And you know what, sir? I do not doubt for a minute that if we provide the support, the guidance, and the accommodations for those with disabilities, they can meet those standards. That's what I'm saying. I am not negating national standards. What I am saying, that locally, we need to do better for these people.
I don't think we have a problem with that.
Well, wow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank the panel for their testimony. And I think, you know, just to clarify and allay some concerns that Senator Yamashita might have, the CFR, and specifically the EEO, the equal employment opportunities standards, as it applies to the Department of Labor, all of this applies, right? So all regulations regarding nondiscrimination, persons with disabilities, I think what Senator Yamashita really wants to see us do is raise the bar and figure out ways to maybe exceed the standards, the national standards. If there's a way we could do that, and, you know, that's going to require, you know, members of the industry, as well as businesses, right, going above and beyond to try and do such that. So I don't think she's in disagreement with the labor standards. She's just, she may want to see where it's applicable, maybe we can try and raise the bar somewhere. But I want to thank the committee, my colleagues, and the chairman for hearing the bill so quickly. We look forward to the deliberation and making the bill better. I believe that it'll go a long way in finally addressing the root cause of why our earning wages on Guam are so low, is that we need to develop the workforce, not arbitrarily raise the minimum wage, but give people the skill sets that they need to earn more money. And I think that this program, in conjunction with what's already been done at the Department of Labor, at the Trades Academy, and the Guam Contractors Association, and the Chamber, will achieve that by developing the workforce. We're going to raise the earning power of those-
Make sure you include the Guam Community College as well, sir.
Guam Community College, yes. You might be better at thanking everybody that's involved in developing our workforce, but that's the key to a stronger economy, and it's actually raising the standard of living for our island. So I want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I adjourn this hearing, I want to ask you to think about something. I just want to pick up where Senator Yamashita left off, and I whispered to her that maybe it might be possible to have this emulate the requirement throughout the government of Guam, where at least two percent of the workforce per agency and per branch have to be, you have to hire a person with a disability. So is it possible that, and I believe the current threshold is two percent, and the legislature is complying, is complying with this local law, is it possible to recognize somehow this particular, the talent that this particular workforce would bring to the table? In all apprenticeship programs, if we can establish that as a percentage, those that would go through this program, we have to recognize those individuals with disabilities and get them gainfully employed?
We've been trying to make that local law applicable, and I think a lot of the agencies are in compliance, but to make it, you know, again, to reintroduce it as a, because-
No, I'm not, I'm just saying, take that current local law and emulate it so how, so that it's recognized in this apprenticeship program. You mentioned landscapers. Wouldn't it be possible to have two percent of those who go through the apprenticeship program be from persons with disabilities?
My understanding is that two percent is only applicable to the government of Guam?
No.
But not to the private sector?
Of course, but I'm saying, if you take that kind of concept and put it into something that, to see an opportunity that we can do here.
Sure.
The two percent requirement, you're right, is for all the government of Guam agencies, including the different branches of government. And again, the legislature's been compliant, but in the case of this apprenticeship program, could we do, could we be more aggressive to reach out to this group and have them a part of this apprenticeship program?
I think making that a mandate is something that you'll probably get opposition to, and I think what it is best practice is, is that, you know, the employer would decide, you know, what positions can be available for those with disabilities, because there are some occupations that require, you know, tactile instances where there, you know, maybe someone is not able to use their hands and feet.
No, but I guess, I guess what Senator Yamashita brought up, I mean, does this thing have any vision, any goals? Maybe that could be one of the goal, is to recognize persons with disabilities and get them through this apprenticeship program. I'm not talking about mandating anything or mandating a private sector employer to-
Well, you were talking about two percent requirement, that's why I meant by mandate, yeah.
Of the participants that go through this.
Oh, I see, I see.
It's one thing, it's one thing to go through an apprenticeship program, there's no guarantee that they'll be hired at the end of that apprenticeship program, but why can't we be more aggressive and reach out to persons with disabilities and also have them go through this program so they can be trained as well, based on those certain job sets that are required? You know, the heavy lifting, certainly, you can't get someone who's, is not able to do that, but you know what I mean? And, I mean, it would be wonderful if this council can say, "Hey, we have to do a better job at reaching out to all sectors of the community." Can we put that somehow in the legislature?
What I can do is reach out to the other state apprenticeship agencies and just see if any of them have included that type of language, and if they have, can they share it with us? And then we will pass it off to you.
Okay, and if you can do that, because I don't really want any opposition on the floor, not to say that Senator Yamashita would oppose this if that weren't in it, but it would get us closer to that goal of trying to, you know, recognize that we have, this government has to do better for persons with disabilities.
Yeah, because there is a, we do have the equal employment opportunity pledge in the standards, but I'm not quite sure about, you know, the encouragement of having the employers go out and actually-
I mean, part of the apprenticeship program is to use these monies to, like OJT, right? So if there's a person with a disability that can provide that job, it's no, it doesn't take away from the private sector employer, because they're not paying for this apprenticeship program anyway, right?
Yes, they are.
Well, but there's a match, right?
No. Well, we have the tax cutter program.
There's some benefit for the employer having this apprenticeship program.
But we don't, we don't, the program is not a-
So what is the benefit? Is it a tax rebate?
The employer- The employers who's going to have these apprentices sign this agreement. And it's in that agreement. And if they fail the agreement, then, you know, they're out of the program. But in, in order for them to continue with the program, they have to follow that set plan that they have signed off at the beginning of the apprenticeship program.
But for those following along, what is the benefit to the employer for participating in this apprenticeship program?
It's a skilled worker. That's, that's the benefit.
And who funds that worker?
The employer.
Actually, on a registered apprenticeship program, it's--
Who funds the worker who goes through an apprenticeship program while they're going through the apprenticeship program, is my point.
The Manpower Development Fund, which is the collection of fees from the private sector.
So the private sector employer does not pay for this employee while they're going through the apprenticeship program?
Let me clarify that. The on-the-job training that the apprentice goes through, the employer foots the bill 100%. On Guam, we have the GRAP legislation for private sector employers to get a 50% tax credit on costs associated with training the apprentice. The related training instruction, of course, if they utilize the Guam Community College or the Guam Trades Academy, because there is an articulation, will pay for their academic, their related training instruction. If the employer chooses to use another entity, they will foot the bill themselves for the related training instruction.
So there definitely is an incentive for the employer to participate in this apprenticeship program?
Yes.
So could we say, as, as part of that incentive, that we, we have a goal of, to match that 2%, to try to, to try to churn out 2% of these individuals with disabilities that will be in this program and gainfully employed? I mean, couldn't that be a reasonable goal?
Mr. Chair, I think we're in those positions where the skill sets are applicable, like what James had mentioned. I believe that, you know, it's something that we can look to other states that may have adopted that. But, you know, we should be concerned with mandating that across the board where those skill sets may not apply, or where the, where there are certain job functions that are, that are required of the already established apprentice program.
No, I've already said, we can't do that. But for those, for those positions that can certainly have these kinds of employees, then we can set a percentage of that--
You're right. And I'll give you an example. Right now, there is a mandate for a certain percentage of apprentices to be women. And we're having a tough time actually recruiting women to get into these positions. In our industry, we're doing programs that would capture them at an early age, middle school and high school, to at least give them some exposure to what we do, you know, in the industry. And an example of that was this past weekend, we had a program called Pizza, Pop, and Power Tools. And that's targeting females, middle school females, and also high school. So that as they develop and go through to high school, they'll start to think about what it is they want to become later on. No place in the public school system, or probably even GCC or UOG, can a girl 13 years old hop on a, on a backhoe with, of course, a professional operator, and operate the backhoe. And that's what we did over the weekend. How many times do you see someone jump on a, like a GPA bucket truck? 13 years old, getting on a bucket truck, and they're operating and going way up there. Hi, we're showing them that, you know, girls can do these things. But we're having a tough time in the industry of recruiting females, and that's the fault of the industry, it's the fault of the association. And that's why we're providing these programs to develop that. It's not going to be a overnight fix. It's going to take time for them to develop that, that 5% requirement for females in apprenticeship program. Now, going back to people with disabilities. I'm not at liberty to talk about a program that we have in the works, but it does involve a government Guam agency, DISIT. And we're working on doing a program together between ourselves and the Trades Academy and DISIT in doing something that you're talking about. But I don't want to spill that out because that program's not in place yet. And I don't want to say, "Well, remember when you were sitting here on November 25th, and you said this?" And so, maybe I can talk to you on the sidebar to, to talk further. But right now, there is a plan in place, or we're hoping that there'd be a plan in place to fix that problem. But again, we got to start. It's going to be a long-term progress, progression, not so much a quick fix overnight. But we are going to address that with the people with disabilities, folks with disabilities, just like we are trying to get more women in the industry to meet, to meet that 5% mandate for apprenticeship.
Also, if I may, if I may, the president has signed an executive order, you know, of, I think, 5% of all the federal contractors, starting in January, that they must have this affirmative action plan to include the disabilities. And also for the, you know, the, also for the minimum wage that's going to effect in January for federal contractors. It is an executive order. And the two executive orders, one is for, to address the disabilities issue and to address the minimum wage.
I think we need to relook that executive order because we found three sections in that executive order that excludes all territories from, from the 10-10 minimum wage on federal projects. So I don't, I don't know how we're going to work that out because it's, it's in three areas of the executive order.
All right.
That it really excludes U.S. territories and possessions from the executive order, so.
To include the 10-10, right?
Yeah, the 10-10. But in the industry, though, both from the Service Contract Act and the Davis Wage Termination, it's, it's really null and void because those wages are already above the 10-10, other than maybe clerical and secretarial positions, maybe some entry-level craft labors that would make probably below that at minimum wage. But that's the only thing.
Okay, so Mr. Paschner, just to recap, you'll, you'll look to see what other jurisdictions do to recognize, how we can recognize persons with disabilities in these kinds of apprenticeship programs?
And also for, for the information of Senator Amashita, the new legislation for, you know, that Work Innovation and Opportunity Act that's replacing WEA, there's a lot of provision in there for, for people with disabilities. In fact, I, I just got through a teleconference this morning with the VR, and it's, it's, it's addressed in there. And as you know, that WEA program is going to go into effect in July of next year. But right now, we're, we're doing the transition to try and, and, and work this thing over before July 1st. But that whole, the whole area of the new legislation addresses a lot of the disabilities issue. So DISIT right now is tasked to, to come up with a plan under this program if they're going to participate in the federal program. Just like us in labor, we have the, we have to follow through if we continue to receive federal grants.
And absent any language that you can find in other jurisdictions, I want to know if you'll be open to, to stating this somehow as a part of the duties of the Guam State Apprenticeship Council to explore additional opportunities for persons with disabilities to avail themselves to this, to this mandate? So it's not saying that you have to do things by percentage, but at least it, it recognizes what Seri Amashita pointed out, that we have to have, in addition to what we want to do here, we have to have a concerted effort to reach out to these folks and, and get them into these kinds of programs. Just as what you've tried to do with encouraging women to get into these industries, it should be the same concept, right?
Well, they're raising this whole thing about affirmative action now as part of all the programs, to make sure that there's parity given to all types of--
But it won't, it won't hurt to put it in here, too, even though it's being addressed in other areas.
We'll see.
Okay, so we'll look forward to your feedback. If there's nothing else, thank you for your participation. Have a safe and wonderful Thanksgiving celebration. Friday's a holiday. Thanks to Governor Calwell. We adjourn. Thank you.